I just found out one of my good friends in Clinton, his son, good constituent of Iowa, loved me. His wife just asked for it. So I can see us going to, I can see me going to Clinton. He's gonna have some check on it. Now it's. What, what, I've been dealing with all these people. Do your whole thing, you should. That way. You should come. Y'all didn't pay, they didn't come ask me. After y'all had blow up up there. This way is where, yeah. So I say.
You look beautiful.
You got it, man.
How'd you find the car dealership?
I thought it was worth it.
I didn't, I thought.
Yeah, I picked him up. He's got sixty-nine green. That's, that's. No, 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 this is a car, a Charger.
Yeah.
Frank.
It's green, sixty-nine.
Yep. So he is a GMC Sprint, seventy-one Jeep Sprint, which is an El Camino. And it was a hot car. And he got off the top of inspiration on it and had it painted by the same guy that was there. I mean, green.
Cause he got some other guys. They only get them shows, just like fun blazers or something. There's a bunch of them.
Oh, that's right.
That's a little out of the blue.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what he thought. We just got it.
If I could ever buy one, I would buy one. But I've been always doing. Really well, I want to have CJ. And. And Clint did it good, painted. I want the, I want the mirror. Yes.
I had seventy, seventy-nine going. I wish I still had.
But that's what I do. I just call shit. I trailer it to the beach. He wanted to go down the beach. Yeah. You don't. Fifty-four is no fifteen.
You know. He said. Sixteen. He was.
Did you have the, did you have the white rims? You had the front.
The chrome.
Yeah, I swear I was.
From the.
Yes, sir. Went from a bumper, front back with the lynch and the mirrored, the mirrored CJ. Yeah. I want no time. Or if it is just a little sunny, you like it.
That's what I'm getting. That's a YJ, which has got.
What year is it?
It must be eighty.
It's ninety.
Ninety. I think it was ninety-six or ninety-seven.
Mine's a, mine's a JK. Everybody laughing. JK, it's just what it is. But. And I don't do it. It ain't. It is.
I can use that. Still. Get home this next day. This is.
That's a nice one.
A lot of shit. I'm sure he's. Yeah. I am sure.
We really don't have that big of a juice. Everything is a whole. All right, it is now five thirty, and I will call the Union County Council, November the eighteenth, meeting to order. At this time, I would ask for our pledge of allegiance to be done by David Sinclair. And the invocation, I'm just sitting up here and look, see who wants to do the invocation, because I've realized that. I'll let Jeff do the invocation tonight, our sergeant, our sheriff, sheriff. What was I gonna call you, sergeant? Our sheriff, I'll let you do the invocation. So if you want to do the invocation, follow our pledge of allegiance, I'll rise quick.
Listen, please. Well, thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for the meaning, blessings, and good grace that you've bestowed upon us. We thank you for all that you do for us. We wish you to look over all our council members and the people in this room tonight and take care of us. And help us all make good decisions about what county business is. Lord, I come to you in prayer, and I thank you for what you do, in Jesus' name I pray.
Amen.
Salute Clay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, I will turn the floor over to our clerk to roll call.
District one, Danny Bright, you don't have his absence. District two, John Glenn.
Present.
District three, Dave Sinclair.
Present.
District four, Amy Smith.
Brother.
District five, Carolyn Rutherford.
Brother.
District six, John Flood, will also be in evidence.
At this time, I would like to present some certificates of appreciation for your service. The first will be to Mr. James Harvey for five years of dedicated service, and he works in our recycling area. To somebody who's actually in the room tonight, we'd like to thank Sheriff Jeff Bailey for his five years of service as our chair.
Thank you very much, Sheriff. Appreciate it.
Hey, man, we done started, but I'm gonna put you on speaker.
This is a, this is a hard one to do and not sound repetitive. But this is a person who's been near and dear to the hearts of many employees here in Union County. She has served here for many years, worked here for many years, and she is still a resource that I look to daily in my job. And I know there are many others that look to her as well. But this certificate of appreciation is to Ms. Linda Jolly for fifty years of dedicated service. Those words alone just don't mean it. We just appreciate her.
Just as a note, I have Councilman Bright on the phone.
All right. Thank you, Daddy. Hey, bud.
Hey, everybody. Thank you, Ms. Linda.
I wish she was here. So the, the next, we will go down to the approval of the minutes. So everybody received the minutes by email. I know y'all have had a chance to read over those. Do I have any additions or deletions to such?
I'll make a motion that we accept them as written.
A motion from Vice Chair Sinclair is written, a second by Ms. Smith. Any questions? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, like sign, and it is unanimous. We have four areas of needed board appointments. Did anybody have anybody they would like to appoint to a board?
I have one for the planning commission.
You have one, sir?
Yeah. The planning commission?
Okay.
Her name's Donna Rice.
Donna Rice?
Yes.
Okay. Write that down.
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Bright. Are there any questions? Any questions? Any questions? All those to accept Ms. Donna Rice as our District Two. Our District Two Planning Commission? Everybody approves, say aye. Any opposed? And it is unanimous. So thank you, Ms. Donna, for your service. And thank you, Councilman Glenn, for recommending her. At this time, we have. Ms. Wilks, the president of Legacy Spartanburg, to present interest in having adult daycare in Union.
Thank you. Thank you. What's my time?
Three minutes, but we, we can go a little over, so if we need to.
All right. All right. Okay. Hello, everyone. I am Dr. Cortella Wilks, CEO and founder of Legacy Healthcare Advantage. You all, everyone should have one of these booklets in front of these. I'm gonna make it quick, three minutes, travel best. So I'm the founder of Dr. Legacy Healthcare Advantage. This is my husband, Matt Wilks, who is a native of Union County. And he is the founder of Legacy Transport Services. The overall, you can read there about, a little more about who I am. I'm also, just to add, a former USC Upstate professor, which I have also taught some classes in the Union County classes for the New Orleans nursing camp. Personal connection, like I said, my husband is a native of Union. That's why this presented this and opening up this adult daycare center in Union County, Union is very important because we are here to honor Union legacy by caring for our legacies in our community. Who we are, we serve seniors, mentally complex children, adults with disabilities, veterans, and low-income families facing financial hardship. We provide in-home care, hourly hospital care, disability waiver services, transportation, those that are in a wheelchair, stretcher, or any of that specialty needing to go to medical appointments. We provide care to pediatrics, medication help. We keep meal support and family caregiver support. With the notebook, you'll see the page where it says disability status. That is are the numbers for Union itself, showing you that from twenty thirteen to twenty twenty-three, there was an increase of forty-one point nine percent of children under the eighteen that has a disability in this county. Population sixty-five and older, that number is growing continuously. And there continues to be a rise of the demand for senior care, caregiver relief, and long-term care support in Union County. In addition to that, also, you can read through this and see that the number is decreasing fast of those who have vehicles and have access to important services like medical transportation, getting their medications, and appointment support. All right. So most importantly, why immediate intervention matters. Without early support, many residents face declining mental health, repeated hospitalizations, decreased access to healthcare experts, isolation, unsafe home environments, and mismedication management. Immediate things that we can do and we can help within the Union County, we can, we have been going out every week and been in New Orleans cities. Probably have seen our vehicles around town. We've been helping people get signed up for Medicaid, Medicare, and actually going into their homes because they don't have access. Transportation, we take them to dialysis, which is a life-sustaining treatment. We make sure they get their medications, and we take them to appointments. What we see doing this is that we have, we have many seniors that are in their home by themselves all day everywhere. They may get a meal, they may not get a meal. They may get to their medical appointments, they may not. So after doing some research and meeting this amazing community advocate, Miss Gary Oleson of Sisters on the Move, which you all will see, that we've partnered with them and been doing some things. We saw there was a great need for an adult daycare center to get these seniors out of their homes to do things like combat loneliness that causes depression, making sure they're safe, giving them a peace of mind, and door-to-door care. I've been doing some research. You all previously had two adult daycares in Union before COVID. Currently, there's none. So my ask is that for some community support, some partnership of housing locations, whatever they may be, your resources from you all of housing and getting this started and get it back up to running. We have expert knowledge. We provide, we are a Medicaid provider. We build veterans. We deal, we have a partnership contract with the VA with Medicaid working on Medicare. So we will build the insurance. There's no, nothing paid out in anybody's pocket. And then a long-term vision could be also independent care homes extended past that, which is small supervised independent living homes that provide safe, long-term residency, affordable supportive housing, and also community integrated living options. Right. So like I said, we're Legacy Healthcare Advantage and Legacy Transport Service. Overall goal here is together we build a healthier, safer, and stronger Union County. Questions?
Good tone. You do not have a, a location in mind, or may, I don't want to mess you up if y'all are talking to somebody about a permanent location, but do y'all have an address that you're looking at right now as a?
No, we wanted to start here first, just to see resources, things that we maybe can access. Because of course, securing a building and different things like that, that takes time, but time with a subject like this is vast.
Okay, what are your ages? You say senior citizens, but people definitely has to be different than senior citizens. How about me five and so many sixty-five?
Yes. Well, actually, adult daycare center, there's no age limit. All right. Actually, to be honest with you, those with disability, it can start from eighteen and up.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? Suggestions from you all? Are there things, places, buildings, anything like that that you all can suggest toward that maybe, well, like a starting point that we can access to consider that? Do you feel like this is a need that you all, or an important thing to consider partnering and working with to have something like this in Union?
Also, what, what is your, what is your, I would ask a question like, what is your track, what is your roadmap for Union County regards to healthcare? Cause I know you've got a new hospital on Four Lane, right? And so what's the plans for Watts Thompson? The old hospital. Not that you want that building, but like, just trying to see where's Union going in the next three and five years of Cross Health Care?
I was getting ready to make say, if you want to offer to buy that building. We surely have been looking for someone who wants that. What, what I will say, we, we are not in that, that's not what the county does, with the exception of we do care about our citizens. And you're exactly right. There were daycare, two elder daycare facilities prior to COVID. They're not now. And we do know it's a struggle. I know families themselves right now that have a loved one that needs twenty-four-hour care. They, they can't afford or do not have a desire to go and put them into assisted living, and they, they feel like they're out there on that branch. So we're, we're always looking and listening for resources that we could suggest to our citizens to go and find. I think what I would do in just listening, I know that we, you're right, you mentioned the VA. I also know that the library is a wealth of resources for us in Union County, and that would be another stop. We're gonna see Ms. Taylor. I know she's got United Way and a few of those assets that are in there. We have loved those neighbors and things like that. We may be able to, to help you, or they could help you with and steer you in that right direction, because we definitely looked at their leadership in helping us. As far as addresses go, we don't, Union County doesn't have anything. By fact, what we're trying to do has been trying to get rid of our overhead of inventory, because that, that, that comes with expenses that is hard for us to keep up with all we have. But I do believe you have a very good product, and I believe you have the right people leading it. I, I am hoping for a big success for y'all and for Union. And you can't go wrong if you got Ms. Mary Owens over there.
Yeah, I think it's a big need in Union for that, so I hope that you can find an address that accommodates you, because I've seen this in other counties, and it works well for some people that don't want to put their loved one in a nursing home.
Absolutely. Yeah. Absolutely. What about transportation in Dawson? I know a lot of people are getting, they have got the beginning, but a lot of people are being transported to Spartanburg area or to maybe New York area and stuff like that. Are you guys seeing a big need for transportation?
We actually are going to vote tonight on extending a pilot transportation. So we do provide local transportation both ways. We've been doing that now for three years, and we're getting ready to extend that grant for another three. So perfect time in the night for y'all to bid for that. Chester Connectors who it is, you'll see their buses in town. Yeah.
So is that a contract? Is it up for being there in Union or?
It's, it was up to bid for this grant project, and it's being extended. If, if we continue this in three years, it would have to go back out to bid again. So if, if we continue to extending that, then absolutely, we love a bid list.
And then regardless, is that, is that for the safety or just?
It can, it can do either. They all have, they're required to have handicap things.
Well, handicap being a person's ambivalence or stretch.
No, they don't do, they don't do ambulances. They do ambulances. No. We typically, that has been left up to the provider, the person who's requesting the services. So they may call.
Now, you did mention you have locations and stuff, like you said, you have buildings, so trying to get rid of some?
There's nothing that would be, they're gonna require upfitting. I'm gonna go over the list of that here in a minute, too. Thank y'all for y'all's time. Thank y'all. All right. At this time, we will move to a presentation by Sheriff Bailey. And, and this presentation is to request a position of a new employee to be a school resource officer. This position will be fully funded by the Union County School District. Sheriff?
Yeah, reasonably, we came into a situation where, you know, we needed another school resource officer at high school. We've got one, which is on the grant, except calling Grant, and that position's paid for. But we have another one that's out there now that we have, just like Sims and Johnable. All expenses were paid by the camp, I mean, by the school district. So there wouldn't be any expense, but you know, it's very important to the citizens of Union County, very important to me that we have an officer in that school. And we happen to, at this point in time, we were lucky enough to have one, it was one or two being SRO. So we've already got that position. We've got the guy that starts to have a lab and waiting room, because that's a lot of students who just want SRO. So I was coming before council to ask that position. It was no expense to, to the county. It was all, I guess, Kendra usually handles it all like for us as far as billing the school district, and we've talked about it. I said, there's no expense, but that's, that's one of the questions, not another position.
And this is not a grant position. This is one of those direct pay positions by the school district. Does anybody have any questions of our share?
Make a motion?
I have a motion from Councilman Glenn. I'll tell you what I'm gonna do. I like this back and forth. I'm gonna take a second from Ms. Carolyn Rutherford, and are there any questions? Any questions? Any questions? All those approve, say aye. All those opposed, and it is unanimous. While I got you standing there, let's fast forward in the agenda real quick. And this is actually going to be to resolutions, item B, authorizing the donation of an unassigned law enforcement canine to the Chester County Sheriff's Office and other matters related there, too. Sheriff?
We had, we had a position come up in the sheriff's office in which our canine handler was hired in that position. And so in the position he's doing, a traffic position, he wouldn't be able to do the traffic and have a canine, because when you have a canine collar, you're tied up for hours. So we wasn't, we're not able to, he's not able to have that dog, so we tried to search inside the office and couldn't really find one that matched up with the dog. Because you know, a dog's been with a handler so long, it's kind of hard to get him to switch out, and sometimes it gets ill and broken, and that causes issues. So really, we didn't have anybody that was comfortable with that dog. So we reached out to Chester, and we didn't want a good dog to just get on the sidelines and there to be used again. So they agreed to accept that dog with council's approval and take it in and, and, you know, provide, let it be serviced in Chester County. But Sheriff Dorsey also told me, if, if we needed another dog, we still have one bloodhound. So if we needed another dog, we should just phone call away and he'll, he'll send his man up here to help us, if it's, if it's a bigger situation than one dog can handle.
And basically, the situation was either they were gonna retire a dog too young, or we can put the dog back to work. Counsel, we have any, would you like to make acts on it?
How old is that dog? I think the dog's probably around four years old. So far. Four years old, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we transfer to Chester County.
Motion made by Vice Chair Sinclair?
Let me say this, we obtained the dog at no expense. It was given to us.
That's great.
So what we paid for it, but it was given to us. I just want to make sure it stays and, and work.
Will we have another canine in Union?
We do have, we have three of, three or three other, yeah. Different, they, they're different, drug dogs, bloodhounds, and tracking. We have a tracking dog. It's also a drug dog.
I have a motion from Vice Chair. You have a second from Ms. Smith. Any questions, the council? Any questions? Any questions? All those in favor say aye. And it's unanimous, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. And I appreciate council allowing me to, to amend that agenda quickly while we had the sheriff up there. The next item is to consider the approval of expenditure from our capital fund for emergency roof repairs to the courthouse. I know this was sent out in our package, but this is to recover the tindome, which is actually a copper, I mean, it's tin now. We're gonna replace it with copper. It is also going to replace Area F, and y'all saw a sign what Area F was. There are miscellaneous repairs needed in that roof. It was at thirty-two five, and while we had all of the scaffolding and the lift equipment there, the roofer is going to bring in a contractor to paint the top end of the courthouse from all the walkways, from as far as they can reach below the, the brick line all the way up. So we won't have to worry. That'll take care of the top end of the roof. Bottom line is, it's, it's less than seven hundred and thirty thousand, or just over seven hundred and thirty. I would like to ask for a total of not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Because there could be some items that might have to be repaired, such as if they find any rotten wood or whatnot else, that that would. find any rotten wood or whatnot else, that that would have to be repaired under our expense. So I'm doing a do not, asking for a do not exceed, it would come out of capital, council capital. And, um, there presently is four point three million dollars in that account.
I'll make a motion that we pull those funds from council capital to do those repairs because it, we have to be good stewards of our courthouse. And an engineer that come in and looked at it and said we needed it.
We, we've had engineers and architects through that entire building. Um, I will tell you, the big concern is the water infiltration. It's coming through, um, the damaged F area, uh, which includes the, um, grand jury room where we have been in council meetings and had seen some of that water rundown. Um, also that cop, that tin dome currently, um, is leaking and that tin dome has asbestos seals on it. That would, in order for us to replace the tin, we would have to take all that ceiling out and abate it. So to repair the tin roof is almost as much as putting a brand new copper dome over the top of it. The original drawings for our courthouse back in nineteen oh nine stated that that would be a copper dome. And I'm sure that tin cost less than copper back in the day. What we're actually doing is replacing it back to what the desired construction was back at that time. So I have a second from Vice Chair Sinclair? I second. You seconded it. Okay, Ms. Smith seconded it. I'll get you in a minute, John.
Oh, sorry.
Are there any questions?
I think it's important that you point out too, that there was only a limited amount of contractors that could actually do that job.
There are only two contractors in the state that can do this job, one's in the upstate, one's in the lower state. So, um, this, this contractor side agree.
So is it to be canine?
Yes, ma'am, canine, yes, ma'am. So I have a motion and a second, are there any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like signs? And it is unanimous. Um, moving over to our next item is consider acceptance of an SC PARD grant for the project at Buffalo Mill Pond. If you remember, we went to, uh, legislature and made some requests. We had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of funds that the county was going to have to pay. Um, I went and asked by council's request to see if there were any other state funds. Um, we were able to find fifty thousand dollars of funding, twenty-five thousand from PARD and twenty-five thousand from DNR. The, uh, what you receive here is from PARD making that offer to us for the twenty-five thousand. What they asked for is the promise of sixty-two hundred and fifty dollars to be our share, where we're going to still be paying a hundred thousand dollars toward that project. So it, we are already covering more than that match, so we're good there. So do I have a motion from council to accept that twenty-five thousand dollars from PARD? I have a motion from Councilman Sinclair, a second from Councilman Glenn. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it is unanimous. Um, next, resolutions. Resolution twenty-five dash nine, a resolution authorizing Union County to extend the three year pilot rule transit program and other matters related there too. That is to take the two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars we have remaining in our transportation allocated grant, or allocated funds that council allocated three years ago that are still remaining. And to use those funds to continue this three year pilot program until three years is up or until money runs out.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion from Councilman Glenn. I have a second from Ms. Rutherford. Any questions? Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it is unanimous. We have a resolution authorizing Union County to execute and deliver one or more equipment lease to purchase agreements in the amount of two point five million dollars between the county and the lesor or lesor thereof to defray cost of acquiring certain equipment and other matters related there too. What this is about is updating our nine-one-one, um, radio equipment, uh, as well, um, get my page, as, as well purchasing ten Hark monitors for EMS. Um, the total balance of, of, we would be going into a lease purchase with nine-one, with, with Motorola and a, a lease purchase with Striker is for two point four six eight million dollars. Nine-one-one is a ten year payment program and, um, the Hark monitors are a six hundred and one thousand dollar total purchase. I would like to point out in the document, uh, if you look at exhibit A for equipment from the radios, it shows a portable radio at a hundred and ten, and it shows the, uh, mobile radios as a quantity of forty-four. Actually, those numbers have been found not to be right. It's a hundred and twenty-four portable radios and is also forty-eight for mobile radios. These radios will be issued out to the Union County and City of Union Fire Services so that we can remove the fire service from, uh, VHF system over into eight hundred megahertz for primary dispatch communication. The reason behind that is, is we need to get law enforcement and EMS on the same frequency. That's most important. But the second problem we have with that is VHF technology is old technology. Um, and we need to replace every piece of equipment we've got going to eight hundred is cheaper than replacing the VHF equipment. Um, I, I would also add that we're going to maintain the VHF systems that the fire service can use to talk around it for train, training. Um, they are more than welcome to use it on fire ground scenes, it just won't be recorded at nine-one-one any longer. Um, they can use it how they would like and, and, and radio to radio mode. Uh, we will use the funds that we've been paying for the five repeater towels that we have. We're going to take those funds and that is what's going to offset the radio usage fees for these radios we're buying, as well as we'll be able to utilize some of those funds to help make the payment.
Motion.
I have a motion from Councilman Wright. I have a second from Councilperson Smith.
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
Uh, this question will be for Mr. Wright. So I know we switched over to eight hundred from, to the sheriff's department. And I, if I remember correctly, I think there was a concern at that time that the fire service was bleeding over into some of your calls. Is that still gonna be an issue once we go back to if the fire service goes to eight hundred also?
No, it wouldn't be an issue at all.
Okay.
Completely separate. Check.
Okay, that's why I wanted to make sure.
Yeah. It would, it would be a lot better service. When you first went to the sheriff's office, it was on one tower side plane. Uh, over a year, we moved up now to a four side plane, which gives access to twelve towers, um, from Newberry and Chester, and also the ones that's here in Union County.
Yeah.
You have enough of that, you have the power.
I just wanted to make sure that wasn't gonna be an issue for a sheriff's department and, and any of this.
Yeah, if we had, had any issues, you can play those on the next question.
Okay, thank you.
Bleed over typically comes from that VHF side.
Yeah, I mean.
And, and Motorola is a digital based and, um, it is, it is found to be more reliable. But with these radios that we're going by, they can always switch over and get off eight hundred too, and move over to a radio to radio.
Are they gonna be dual?
They won't be, they won't be VHF and eight hundred, no sir, they'll just be eight hundred. But what you'll have is, is the ability to go radio to radio, any ability to talk to sheriff's officer EMS. And you'll be able to listen to them as well.
Any of that equipment at those satellite sites, do we own any of that equipment?
We own the equipment that's on it. We're part of the, part of our expenses, we're gonna have to, um, get somebody to go up there and bring it down. Um, some of these tower sites, uh, we have, some of them are six months notice that we have to give, some are a year notice. So we're, we, we've got those numbers and once we have a approval of this, we'll go ahead and start making those notifications so we can start timing them out and get those contracts out, uh, and, and, uh, terminated as soon as we can by the agreement.
Is that equipment useful for anything else we do, do in the county?
I doubt it. But, um, since we own the equipment before we get rid of it, we will definitely make sure. And if we do decide to get rid of it, it will have to go through our disposal process, which will be required auction.
Much of us do that.
Yeah, it is.
It's all, it's all.
Yeah.
Matter of fact, the reason we're replacing the nine-one-one equipment is because on average, it's eighteen years of age. Can y'all imagine the technology that's gone on in the past eighteen years? Uh, it's gonna be a tremendous help to nine-one-one and our burnished responders.
We're, we're in the process of second flying on the Dallas side in the last six months. But just, you know, the one call I run out, I have one property that's not conscious of, we're having to go up there and have that, that and prop down, repair. So that, that equipment's failing, they're running red.
And I'd hate to know what it would cost to have, if we had to replace all that VHF equipment at the foot of that tower, or for that matter, that tower. And at that point in time, we're not dedicated solely to that tower. Because it needs a lot of work as far as communication cabling and the equipment at the foot of it. Well, I have a motion, I have a second. I think you gave me a second, right? We have a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Everybody? No, I got you, Danette. Everybody, I heard you, Dan, you're not even here, everybody else is shaking their head. So I got you, it's unanimous. Okay. Moving into ordinances, um, ordinance number four oh seven is an ordinance to direct the distribution of certain fee in lieu of taxes. Um, we've had, this will be our third reading, we've had our public hearing. Um, let me back up one second before we go into that, let me back up to this resolution. Um, there is a four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar down payment for nine-one-one. I'm also asking council to approve that out of council capital. And that would bring our capital, council account down to three point one two million dollars. Um, is council okay for us making the E-nine-one-one down payment out of council capital?
Make a motion.
Motion from Councilman Sinclair?
Second.
Second from Councilman Glenn. Any questions? All those approve, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Now to four oh seven, um, and that is for our distribution of fee in lieu of taxes. We've had three readings and a public hearing. Do I have a motion to accept third reading?
Motion.
I have a motion from Councilperson Rutherford. I have a second from Councilperson Smith. Discussion, any? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like signs? And it is unanimous. Third, third and final reading, um, for the fee in lieu of between Union County and what was previously known as Gestamp and is now Project Robin. I have Mr. Mike Draper here, who is, uh, working, uh, for the benefit of, uh, Gestamp. Uh, Mike, if you'd like to stand up to the lectern and tell us what's, what all that you know about it and what we need to know.
Hey, supervisor Russell, council members, good evening. Um, my first visit, my first opportunity to visit Union was back in twenty sixteen, almost ten years ago. At that time, I was, I was working on development projects with Gestamp all over the southeast and up in the Midwest. Um, and we, uh, we're basically examining the best location to put a significant expansion um, in any of those locations. And I got to work with folks from Union County, also the South Carolina Department of Commerce. And at the end of the day, decided that, uh, Union would be the best location for that expansion. That resulted in the company putting a new manufacturing operation here, um, investing over a hundred million dollars and creating about two hundred and fifty jobs at that time. Since, uh, back in two thousand and nine, two, twenty twenty-three, the company invested over three hundred million dollars here locally in Union County. Um, the company's also employed well over five hundred employees, um, since that time. Um, in addition to the number of employees and the payroll here locally, the company also uses a significant number of local suppliers. So the ripple effect on the economic development in the local community is, uh, even more significant than just the payroll at the plant. Uh, the company continues to try to strive to find more, more local employees, but local suppliers, uh, currently almost ninety percent of the suppliers are here either locally or regionally, um, here in that, this part of the state. So the company continues to strive to, uh, basically, uh, you have a good partner and against corporate citizen here for the local economy. Uh, fast forward to the last couple of years, I've been having a significant pleasure of working with Dalton Williams in the Union County Development Board, um, and examining another expansion, um, for, uh, Union County. Uh, and Gestamp is basically, because of this significant partnership that they've had with the county and with the state, um, is basically looking to move forward with another potential investment of about two hundred million dollars and retention of over five hundred jobs. So as a result of this, uh, the company is gonna be making, uh, significant investments in new production, manufacturing equipment, uh, to help service some of the major OEM customers, um, will continue to basically thrive here in Union County. So if, uh, anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Council, you have any questions, Mr. Drake? Um, I am just, I'm glad, and I'm gonna thank Gestamp personally and you for working with them and representing them, um, for, again, taking another, um, another shot at Union County and giving us this wonderful opportunity. Gestamp has been a wonderful, um, employer and business that has moved in, they're a great partner to our, our county. And we appreciate them showing, this is nothing more to commitment, when you're gonna take a company, you're gonna put two hundred million dollars back into that business to grow it. Um, that is a huge investment and, and we very much want to thank y'all for making that Okay, so with that being said, um, do I have a motion to accept third reading on this fee over?
Motion.
Motion, Councilman Sinclair. Second from Ms. Rutherford. Any questions? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like? And it is unanimous. Um, I don't think we've had any committee meetings, so we don't really have any committee meetings to report. Um, and then running into the supervisors' report, um, I know last month we had a lot going on and I didn't really get to, to go out and, and, um, I didn't, didn't really get out and do what I needed to do and get one created. Um, but I do know that, uh, alcohol and drug abuse continues to serve, uh, a lot of people, but especially this past month in October, they reached out to all of our students with their Red Ribbon Week. So thank you, Christina and your staff. Um, I know our detention center is, uh, continually, um, they, they are doing a wonderful job and getting ready to have a new addition to begin to house and occupy. Um, we have, uh, wait a minute, the, the, the alcohol and drug was eighty-seven, not including students was treated additional eighty-seven people. Um, uh, our assessor has, um, gone through a good bit of work. Um, he's heard from appeals, they've been able to work through most of the appeal process for reassessment. Reassessment went off, off fairly smooth. And, um, again, I think Union County, I want to applaud county council and our county employees because what they did was, is, is you kept those taxes down as low as possible so there were no increases from that reassessment. Um, not from county operations in anyways. Um, our animal control, I do need to say, animal control this past month of October exceeded the shit number of sheriff's calls, were the calls we had. We had nineteen hundred and twenty-three calls for service in the month of October. Um, delinquent tax had their tax sale and, uh, they, they've redeemed twenty-eight properties and sold a hundred and forty-seven properties. So they, they were quite busy. Um, economic development, uh, has opened up eight new different projects. And I wished I could tell you that, um, you have a high return on those, that is not the case. Uh, I will tell you though, that Dalton does a wonderful job and he'll, he'll turn out every one of those numbers that he can. Um, and we have just introduced Robin, we still also have Project Folo and Eagles Neck that are still being worked on. I don't know who comes up with these names, okay, folks, I wouldn't, I would have called them something else, but, um, um, I do know, uh, as a note, and just to put it out on public record, um, CSL Plasma was just acquired by Medical Scientific Technologies. That has been put out publicly, so I will share that with y'all. The business is staying where it is, the leadership team's staying there. Um, and as a matter of fact, they're, they're looking for room to grow. So, uh, we are very excited for what this may bring. Um, along with that, transportation, in last month, in October, our transportation numbers, which normally run somewhere around four fifty to five hundred, went up to six hundred and sixty riders. Um, tourism has been really, really busy. Uh, I don't know if y'all have noticed, but, uh, Main Street's decorated, uh, the county courthouse is, uh, on the outside decorated. I know we got some wonderful decorations going on the inside. Clerk of Court is really excited about some of them. Um, but, uh, we will have all this ready because, um, Thursday night, we have, um, open. But we will have all this ready because Thursday night we have open house downtown Union. So I'd ask anybody that wants to be there to please come. EMS ran five hundred and three calls. I will make a point that over seven times, seven days during the month of October. They ran in excess of twenty calls with the highest being twenty four calls. But there were sixteen times that we had during the month of October where we had not just duplicate calls, we would slam out of ambulances. We we literally had to make an ambulance. The call in staff or our management had to crawl into a backup ambulance. Or we had to hurry up and get another ambulance center out. So that is something worth noting as we're talking about some of our EMS product. You can also see their primary response protocols. I would urge y'all, please, take a look at this. And just go through and see what what are our primary impressions and what are our primary breakdowns of these calls they go to. Nine one one had a total of thirty three hundred and nine calls. And you can see they have a breakdown of the calls that our law enforcement went to, fire departments went to, and EMS went to. I T is constantly working and when they don't have a sheet and a half of stuff that they're doing, we got a concern. Because they, we live, eat and breathe by technology in Union County. And Ms. Diane and her staff did a wonderful job in keeping us up with that. Public Works, the airport, we were supposed to start a $2.7 million one way in lighting grant. It was supposed to actually start this month. A couple of things happened, government shutdown being the primary. So that pushed this project back. It will not start until the spring of the year. But we've still been able to keep the airport open and we've still been able to do some of our modifications that we're doing out there. We're supposed to start putting metal inside the hangars for the walls. That's supposed to start happening as soon as we can get through putting up Christmas decorations. Road crew did a lot of work. Our recycling center, I've got to say that. They do a wonderful job and we were able to pick up over twelve hundred and fifty five pounds of trash in Cross Keys during the month of October in our cleanup day. So again, building maintenance, six hundred and forty total hours of manpower. And work orders were completed at our various buildings. Recreation department had two rentals, South Hills, the disc golf course is just going slowly to finish up, but I promise you, it's getting there. Timken Sports has had three local games, ten miracle league games, and two tournaments played with thirty six to fifty teams. The high school is basically about done for the year with the stadium. But just in the month of October, we had two varsity games, one J B High where we joined both Jonesville and Sims play and they play at the stadium. And then you see how much we paid out for security and officials and we had a yard sale and food distribution. Victor Mavick had served fifty two and as a sign of growth, we in October put out sixty eight building permits. And one hundred and thirty four inspections were offered. To me, that is just, that's your sign of growth right there. Sixty eight new building permits. Those are good things. Additional projects, the jail additions. It's been approved by the state fire marshal's office and we're ready to start occupying. A staffing report completed by the Association of Counties and S C D C stated that we need ten personnel per shift instead of our seven that we have presently. And I don't know how we're going to be able to accomplish that in any time soon. As this was stated, this is a state recommendation. And we will do our best to do what we can because we definitely want to keep our inmates and our detention officers safe. But I would make a point that ten officers is twice as much as the sheriff can put on the road in an unconfined county. So just food for thought. Donation of properties. We we have an ordinance ready for the quick job. We weren't able to get it tonight, but the quick job building turned it over to S C C. We're still pending the following, a five oh one flat drive, two vacant lots in Buffalo, the Buffalo Mill Office, the Chrysler Building when it's available. The Jonesville Mini Park and two hospital properties. The Buffalo Mill Pond Project is ongoing right now. They've already started dredging the pond. They're going to clean the pond, dredge the pond, clean the edges, repave the walk-in trail system, replace two foot bridges. Provide general cleaning and grading around the walk-in chutes. Actually put up solar pole lights. It will actually will extreme lights, but they will be sold. That way we don't have to have electrical lines running through water or around water. There will be upgrades done to the playground area and there will be a silt pond created upstream. So it will stop the pond hopefully from being able to have that silt built up in the future. Remember, this pond was designed as a fire retention pond for the mill when it was in operation. Really not for recreation, but we're doing our best to keep it as clean and as nice as we can for the community. And I hope this will be a great benefit. Buffalo Mill Property and Langley Dry Cleaner, we are still working on these projects. The CBD G grants that we put in for cleanup, this will not be allowed till later this month of the first of December. But we're still had multiple meetings with a bunch of different invested parties. Some of those being our cog and some of them being the state historical group. To make sure that we properly memorialize these sites as we're going through the cleanup. Once we have the money, the first phase will be engineering and design. Then the second phase will be the bidding or procuring of the best services. And then it will be doing start the work. I expect that to be late summer to early fall of twenty twenty six. Wallace Thompson Hospital. Those properties, we know we're waiting on all the legal documents to be pulled together. And then we've got a committee that we will bring in. Their first order of business will be elect a chairperson. Then they will vote to sign the properties over to Union County. Then we will have our signatures, cross signatures between the chair and myself. And then we will suspend the committee and terminate the committee because we will no longer have a Union County Hospital District. Maintenance shop, we've already poured half of the concrete on the joint city county maintenance shop. The other half gets paid, just gets poured this Friday. Building will be delivered on December the fourth, and I'm sure we're going to see a scurry of activity that's going to start. Because I feel like this is going to go up pretty quick. I think the building will go up pretty quick. The new animal shelter, everything, we're ready on there except for sewer. And we've been working with, with Dalton and his group and with Joe and the city. Because some of the sewers contingent on getting it to the Cud property and some other industrial site work that needs to be done. Now Dalton's looking at me pretty funny because he's trying to guard his industrial money, economic development money. But we may have had to use some of this. The seven point five million is the cost of the shelter. And the recycling center with the sewer as part of that project. But if we could save some money out of it, then that's just less money. We don't have to worry about seven and a half. Maybe we get it down to six and a half or maybe six. Who knows? Who knows what Dalton will let us get rid of? But I'm picking on Dalton. It's not really his say, but we're working towards that part. We also in your reports, I did provide some some graphics to that so that you'd be able to see that in your report. And this report will be filed with our minutes too. The next project is our Timken Sports Complex. We had our second public hearing that was done this past Thursday night. We had about thirty people present and I thought it was a good meeting. What we are seeing out of this is that I think our public, their words were, when are you going to start? We had some really good questions. I think we've got a really good plan. Where are we at? Basically, we don't have the designs of the building yet. We know that we need at least six basketball courts in that building to get the twelve volleyball courts. We need to make bringing in tournaments a reality. So we will work towards that. That's just the inside of the building that can do more than basketball and volleyball. It can do match sports. It could do cheerleading, wrestling. There's a lot of things that it can be done, even movie night if somebody wanted to do movie night. It will have two multipurpose fields, which could be football or soccer. And soccer is something that's very much a growing sport in our community. It'll also have basketball courts, tennis courts and pickleball courts, walk-in trails and shelters that people can use and rent for birthdays and whatnot else. So I think it's good. We reviewed with everybody that was there that night. The way we would pay for this would be through community development funds and hospitality funds. There would not be any need to raise taxes. The county courthouse facility. Y'all did, you did approve the roof. What we also got from our architects and engineers is basically the building's in great shape except for those things that would have to be replaced. In any home after thirty five to fifty years of use. Electrical systems, plumbing systems, technology based systems, cable, fiber, what whatnot. Painting, maybe some stiffening up of some wooden floors that had been there for one hundred and twenty five years. So the roof, the reason it becomes important, I got, I got, we've got to make the courthouse dry first. Before we can start looking at doing anything else. Then we'll create a punch list and we'll be able to work that down as money becomes available. Look, Cross Keys Park, we have new playground equipment on order for Cross Keys. We also have secured funding for the asphalt that'll be on the walking trails and on the basketball court. And we also have Spartanburg Healthcare is wanting to help us with that, with the painting of the basketball lines and all of that stuff as a big project. So asphalt plants won't open back up until spring, so it'll probably be spring before you see the asphalt poured. But we're going to get this done. It's on the radar screen. And I'm sure that our guys are not going to let equipment come in, playground equipment come in and sit on it. They're going to be ready to go ahead and get that installed as soon as they can. They worry you death. We have two gateway signs and one electronic sign that's going through our procurement process right now. And the fiber project, we are actually putting fiber to county, all county buildings, including EMS on South End Town. The EMS will will have it. We're going to put it at the both buildings. That we want to keep with the Wallace Thompson Hospital property, which is the old Sherwood Soul Skating Rink. Which is the old pediatrics office, doctor's office and surgical office. Fiber will be put there. Fiber's been put in the sheriff's office. Matter of fact, it just got completely terminated at at the, what do y'all call it? The task force? Task force building?
Sideburn Sheriff's Office?
That's right. Patrol Office. No, not Patrol Office. Drug Task Force. We're putting cable there, fiber there. We're trying to loop our system. And if we can loop our system, what we do is we don't have to be on an A T and T business account. It becomes our own property and our own maintenance upkeep. And the city and the county have been working together on this project. We bought the cable and the city's installing it. And so it's great partnership. But the goal is it's going to save us a great bit of money years to come, once this has been connected. So that's really about the supervisors' report. Are there any questions about those? Hearing none. It's elected official time. I got two in a row right here. Ms. Debbie, you got anything?
Reassessment, I think I fully understand, but also Homestead, you know, I can say to them, we'll get you representatives out there and you can go upstairs with five thousand, nine hundred thousand.
And what Ms. Debbie's saying is that Homestead exemption exempts somebody over the age of sixty five the first fifty thousand dollars in value of the property. That amount has not gone up at all since it was created, what, twenty years ago, Ms. Debbie? So yeah, so with taxes going up, property growth going, that is something our state legislature are going to have to look at. But yep, tax bills did go out and I've had, I've had people call me, thank me for not raising taxes. I said, don't thank me. You need to call and thank your council members. They did a really good job. We don't control everything, but we do county operations. But at the same time, no, I've had, I've been fussed at too. So I'll be the first to agree to that. I'm okay with it. I signed up for this job. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. So I want to say thank you, Philip, for everything that you're doing for the courthouse. When I came in in January, of course, from a woman's perspective of a courthouse, it is outdated. One hundred percent is outdated. So when I started talking to Philip about doing this, that and the other to make our courthouse as beautiful as other courthouses around the state. You know, he said, let's look at the roof first. So I have my set up on top of the roof and it looks like a roof and it looks like it's an okay roof. But when it rains and there's wire running down walls, it's not an okay roof. And of course, when the roof was said, hey, we're not this pretty copper back up here instead of this ugly tin, I got all excited because I'm about the prettiness of it. So I want to say thank you to Philip for jumping on that project and not making me beg, 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 beg for it because it is something that is needed. And to county council for approving it. Because yes, though it is, our courthouse is not up to date like other courthouses in the state, a lot of them. My personal opinion, it is the most beautiful courthouse in the state. And it is by far the most beautiful building in Union County. And I want all of our citizens to walk in and to know that and be proud of it. So I'm very excited about that. Thank you, thank you, thank you for allowing us to get started. To make our courthouse something that everybody can be proud of. And I also have to say thank you to Ms. Curtis Hunter for helping us out with Christmas decorations. We're still getting those out outside. We hope that everything is done by Thursday. But then as soon as Thursday's over, we will be starting on the inside and I'm excited about that. So if you come into the courthouse, I will say, don't stand still. You might get decorated. And to Michael, I have to say thank you. I know that I am a part of their side because I think that what we need to be done should be done yesterday and tomorrow. And I know that he puts up with me on that. So thank y'all again. And again, I encourage every citizen, every county council member, remember to come into the courthouse to see what we're doing to improve the services that we offer to you guys.
I will say this year, the fountain, the oak tree's finally gone out the fountain or whatever that tree was. And that's where the Christmas tree is going on top of that fountain this year. It's going to look really good. And then when it comes back, Stephanie actually worked out with four H and that the group that's working with the metal. To take copper and to make a palm tree to put back in its place. So it's going to look really, really good. And that oak tree needed to go a long time ago. Okay? So I appreciate you grabbing that bull by the horns, Stephanie.
I will say I wanted to plant the oak tree outside somewhere, but it was actually a danger. It was very sharp, very pointy, and it would have been a danger to the public. So we could not reuse it.
We take care of surplus metal on a regular basis. Sheriff, you got anything?
Sheriff Soffler's hosted a retirement drop in for Russell Roark last night, better known as Chief. He started his career in law enforcement in nineteen sixty two and him retired approximately two weeks ago. And that made him the longest serving law, active serving law enforcement officer in the state of South Carolina, which I don't see that record ever being bought.
Me neither.
They don't make it easy to. And our next project coming up, the shop in the cop is going to come up in December. That's a blessing to kids that might not have everything they need, you know, and we're out there trying to help them get that. So out there, our next project with the community. Thank you all.
And the only announcement that I have left is, is December the fifth is going to be our county council provided drop in for all the employees. It'll be in this room, these two rooms here. We'll probably have the food set up in the back. Y'all are all invited. Yes, young man, you can get mad at me. I apologize. But it is from what, ten thirty, eleven o'clock to? Eleven thirty to one thirty here in this building. I told you it was going to get them. But you know, it is a, it is. It's a way to thank our employees. It's hard. I know it's Christmas and our employees have a lot going on. But they deserve something for Christmas, taking care of it. Council, I appreciate y'all approving that in the budget. So that's what we're going to do. And if y'all can be here, please do and thank these employees for what they do. With that, do y'all have any announcements y'all would like to make?
Yeah, I know y'all seen my text when I said I had those presentations from the leadership council that me and Dalton go to with the school district. Unfortunately, I changed vehicles yesterday, so everything that was in that vehicle was now in the garage. So I left the presentation, so I need to get y'all those presentations because you really need to see some of these comments these kids make. About Union and what they think it should look like in the future.
I love that.
I'm probably going to get them and I may just bring them by your office and drop them off and stick them in the bell box or somewhere because y'all need to see those.
I'm actually meeting with the student leadership council on December the tenth at ten o'clock to do that same thing. And talk with them about it. So I'm. So I'm, I'm glad y'all are involved in that. That's good things, being involved and hearing what they say. I look forward to it. Dave?
It is also on website too, right? Yeah, I mean, that's why I took the presentation, but I give them to y'all.
Danny, you got any announcements or anything?
Did you say Danny?
Yes, sir.
No, no, I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Annie, Ms. Carolyn? All right. Well, with that being said, um, there's no other business. Um, do I have to make a, a motion to adjourn? I, I have a motion sent from Annie and a second from Ms. Carolyn. So everybody who agrees, stand up.